All this regularly scheduled Craven County Board of Commissioners meeting to order Monday, October 7th is now 7:00 P.M. I welcome each and every one of you. A reminder, if I can have all of you turn off your phones or put them on vibrate, any electronic devices you may have. Before we get started, I'd like to identify the Mayor of Bridgeton, Mayor Rodman-Williams. Sir, welcome. We have a large crowd, both in here and in the next room, on a couple issues. We will hear everyone that's signed up. I promised a lot of you last time to come to the meeting at last time, and this is fine. I think I had more people that wanted to speak last time than now, so, but welcome. This is your board. This is your opportunity to speak, and we will sit here and listen on that. Based on that, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner McKay?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Sampson?
Here.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Here.
Chairman Liner?
Here. If you please stand for the pledge, or remain standing for prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you so much, Almighty God, that we can come into your presence and pray for these county commissioners and county employees that serve us. We thank you for all your work for or represent Craven County. We pray that you keep them and their families safe. We pray for our county today, that it would have this day of safety and security. Lord, it is our prayer, that as our leaders serve today, that you give them wisdom, that you give them patience, that you give them kindness and understanding. May we remember the words of the scripture, that righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. Remember, the Bible says today, that blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. We thank you for America and for Craven County. We thank you for the privilege of prayer in this very sacred assembly. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Again, welcome.
Receive a motion approved the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Vice Chair, petitions of citizens, let me read this. Comments directly pertaining to the items on the agenda of any regular scheduled meeting of the board shall be made during any agenda comment period occurring at the beginning of each regular scheduled meeting. Do we have any, sir?
Yes. My pleasure to have Mayor Rodman-Williams come up.
Tom, I told him he doesn't have to speak unless we call him.
Oh, okay. Listen, what's on?
Okay.
Okay. Teresa Brier Willer.
At this time, we'll pass.
Okay. Ross Beebe?
I've been reserved comments this time.
Ladies and gentlemen, there will be no other comments. So if you have anything you want to bring forward, put it forward. Please feel free to, because there will be no opportunity after this during our deliberation or coming up for the discussion on this, on ABC Board. It'll be the board and the chairman of their board going back and forth. Make sure, I want to make sure everybody understands that. Manager Attorney, that's correct, is that not?
Correct, sir.
Okay. Okay. All right, moving on. Consent agenda, before I entertain a motion, Commissioner Jones will be excused from this vote. He has family members directly involved with the transactions on the tax refund here, and we've checked, and it's the right thing to do. So when we vote, it'd be a six vote, and one member has been excused. So the consent agenda approved minutes of September 16th, 2019, regular session.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
We actually need a vote.
Excuse.
Excuse Commissioner Jones.
Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Need a roll call or just voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, consent agenda approved minutes of September 16th, 2019, regular session, and September 23rd, 2019, reconvene session, and the tax release and refunds.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
Yes. Moving on, ABC Board, Chip Cagnan, CCABC Board Chair. Chip, welcome.
Always a pleasure, sir, to be here. Good evening, Board, citizens. There we are. Thank you. Sir, this is a, if you will, a redo of the last time I was here. We have two items that the ABC Board needs to have done, one by statute, and that is the approval of our travel policy. I will say that in general, that it mimics the county travel policy. You'll read about word for word, and other than the fact that, yes, as county manager minds as general manager, I would ask you to entertain approving it. I would also tell you that this board's travel, we have that down now to two meetings a year, in essence, both sponsored by our association in the state, with co-sponsored by the North Carolina ABC Commission. Those are the only two. We do no longer go out of state, so.
Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Any comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
Yes.
The second item is the main event. As you know, we've been working on this item for over two years now. After a lot of hard work by this board, I want to thank each and every one of you for helping us and giving us leadership, particularly Chairman and Vice Chair and Booker. I also want to thank the Mayor of Bridgeton for all his work in this endeavor, and all our citizens in Bridgeton. Having said that, it's a simple request at this time. We're going to ask you for the $270,000 approval to buy the land in Bridgeton for a purpose of building a store at a date, after we do much, much work down the road to get us to that point, and we are not prepared to discuss that aspect, just the land, at this time. We will tell you that it meets all of the state's criteria, environmental, and we've been working with Town of Bridgeton permitting and so forth, and the landowners. So we are ready to take this and to start the process, and it's a long process. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to change up a little bit of how I do this. We have a commissioner sits on your board, and I want to pass it to Commissioner Booker for his comments and his feet, sir, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you. I have been on the board of the ABC for about three meetings, and I will start by saying that I'm impressed with the professionalism of that board, the way it's run, and the commitment of the board members. There are, I believe, five members or six on that board, and they're very, very serious and committed about what they do. I'll start by saying that the mayor and the four aldermen from the city of Bridgeton have all signed off in support of this, so there's no contention among the officials in Bridgeton about this purchase. Second comment I'll make is, I believe that this may be about the best piece of ground in Bridgeton. If I were in the business of building a retail business in Bridgeton, this is the site I'd want to build it on. There is no money being spent to do this from the taxpayers. The money to purchase this land is purchased, its purchase would be paid for, will be paid for, if it's approved, by the ABC Board. And you may say, well, where do they get that kind of money? Well, every time a product is sold, a certain percentage of that product stays with the board. And it's really, it was kind of news to me when I came on this board, that the ABC contributes, in addition to having some money in the bank, they contribute a large amount of money to Craven County every year, which helps keep our taxes low. In fact, this year, manager helped me, $600 and some thousand dollars was, a check was delivered to this board at the last meeting. So it's not costing the taxpayers anything by making this purchase. We're not voting to build a new building at this time. That would come later, as the chairman said, if we decide to do that. And there's a couple of reasons why we might decide to do that. We don't know what's going to happen in James City. The James City store is a large contributor, if you will, to the coffers of the ABC, and with the construction that's going to happen over there, it could be that we may have, at least temporarily, to replace that location. So that's a possibility. This is a business decision. I don't see a lot, I don't want a lot of emotion put into it. It's just pure business decision, which I believe is the right one to make. The last point I would make is, there are some people who are against this decision based on their belief that alcohol is a bad thing. I vote yes. But I think we tried, if I remember right, I checked some history, where we tried the thing called prohibition one time, and it didn't work very well. As soon as prohibition ended, there was a vote, and ABC Board in 1935 was established in Craven County, and there was a line out the door on the first day it opened. By the way, that first location was where the current branches store is on Pollock Street. I wasn't born yet, so, and I didn't live here, obviously. So at any rate, having said that, my only comment other than that would be, I would urge all of the commissioners to support this decision.
I would second that motion. I think one thing that should be mentioned also is that even though we have been given $650,000, which is more than we got before, the biggest part of this consumption.
If I could say it was $800,000.
Total.
The check was $600,000.
Yeah, but you got two checks.
We're talking about two checks.
Eight hundred thousand. I stand corrected.
That consumption has not increased, only the price of the alcohol has increased.
All right, let me, let me sure I understand that. We have a motion?
You make the motion.
You made a second?
Correct.
Okay. Before I call for a vote, let's make sure everybody on this board understands. The motion is to put this in motion and buy the land. Now, by doing that, make sure you understand, it's implied that this board, our future board, could build this store. We're not obligating ourselves at this time, but it's implied. So we will need to give guidance on the chair, whether to continue moving forward or hold it, or if it goes no, then this issue will become null and void. With no action will be taken in the future. We stand the way we are now. So make sure you understand what we're, what's being asked, and which way you're going to go. So make sure everybody's got a clear brain on this.
Before we vote?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Booker had mentioned that possibility with the James City store. That wouldn't be closed. It's just that it wouldn't be doing the business that it normally does, but it still will remain.
Yeah, and, yeah, okay, I will go for that.
Just to add to that, the road, as it's presently designed, is going to really disrupt that shopping center where the store in James City is, and that could present a real problem. So that's the, that's the issue there.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussions? Any other comments? Any other recommendations? Hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Commissioner McKay?
No.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
No.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Liner?
That's why they pay me the big bucks, right? You know, I'm torn on this. I really am. This is, this is a hard one. I heard, and I've got to have respect and alliance on the chair, the commissioner I put over there to lead us, and I hear what he's having to say. I got 15 minutes, right? Call the question? I guess I should have prayed with you, Commissioner Jones. I really don't.
Call a recess, I'll pray for you.
You know, you're in for a penny, you're in for a pound. whichever way it goes, we got to figure out what we're going to do. I'll vote yes. Okay, so it goes 4-3. Before we leave here tonight, though, right now, I would like this board to provide some guidance to the chair, because I'll tell you right now, right now, if this comes back to me next year, or in the next two years, to build that store, you will get a no. But I need to know what this board wants to do. Do we want them to move forward on building a store? Do we want him to hold 18 to 24 months before he comes back and asks for approval? Because you got to remember, he's got an architect on the board, he's got to get drawings, and that's money. But this board has to make that decision. Chip has done a lot of work. Chip has done a lot of things, and it's all good, don't get me wrong. But he needs guidance on which we're going to say. Now, we've implied that somewhere's down the road, he could probably get a store. But how long are we going to wait, or how long we want to let him wait before he comes back? Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity to speak. And while I agree and understand that we are implying that the store will be built, implying it and committing to it are two different things. We are just now, we are still recovering from Hurricane Florence. We don't really know the impact of the conversion of 70 to 42, the impact on the James City area, what that can be, what that's really going to look like. We are making educated guesses, we are making suppositions, but at the end of the day, until it happens, until the construction starts, and until we see the impact, we really don't know. With it, I appreciate the comment over, it is the best retail site in that area. I also appreciate Bridgeton's desire for a spark plug to get the combustion of development going in that area, very definitely. But I think we need to wait and see what's going to happen in the James City area first before we move forward on anything. So I would support purchase the land, direct the chair to wait 18 to 24 months before coming back to us with any proposals to build the building. We don't know what that section is going to look like, whether it be James City or Bridgeton, or anything else, until the construction starts, and I think we need more information before we know exactly how to proceed. So that is what I would support.
Is that a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Hearing no, second? Your second.
Please, Mr. Chairman, if you will, please restate the motion.
State, state, the motion is that direction being given to the chair of the ABC Board and that come back before this board requesting approval, or to move forward on a new store for 18 to 24 months?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, please.
First, I want to say, Mr. Cagnan has done an excellent job in leading ABC Board. I got a lot of respect for Mayor Williams and their town board. If it was in the town of Coe City, they would, I would have voted the same way I did tonight, and Mayor Mitchell would have beat me over the head when I left here. I done it for my beliefs. I do not drink, I don't look down on anybody that does. But in my position as a deacon in my church, I hold an oath in my commitment that I will not partake, and it's my spiritual belief. Again, nothing against anybody that does. I also have concern, though, of legislation that is in the North Carolina House of Representatives. I mean, I asked you about that last time, and I think you gave a great explanation. But I hear different opinions from different folks that I talk to, especially with leaders in the North Carolina Legislature. It has bipartisan support to make major changes to the ABC system as we know it today, and we're going to commit, you know, and I will support the board as direction as you go. If this had have been anywhere, we're committing a great sum of money towards something that we don't know that is even going to exist in the future, if the North Carolina Legislature changes the way that we operate in the ABC system. And so it is an investment in the lane. But I will, I would support what my colleague has brought forth. I think that would be a good business decision. It would give us time to wait to see what the North Carolina Legislature was going to do. I think in the next session, that maybe we would see something of, have some major direction of where they're going to head with this thing. But I think they're to a point that they're not going to keep talking about it. They're either going to take action on it, or it's going to be a dead issue. So I would support the motion.
Any other comments?
Only, Mr. Chairman, reference to Michana Jones, pretty much, I think the people should know, in the audience, and in the county, and in the state, that the worst thing that could happen is we go to privatization. Number one, we'll have no control over these stores. Number two, we're going to have a bigger problem than we ever had before, because what's going to happen is Walmart, Harris Teeter, Food Lion, and every other store is going to be selling the alcohol. And there's no control over going into those stores, where we'll have people checking to make sure that they're not buying liquor because they're underage, or they shouldn't be buying liquor. So I don't see, from the people I've talked to in the legislature, and we talk to different people, they don't feel that this is really going to happen as far as privatization, but they are going to open it up to some of the stores as far as selling of alcohol. Is that correct, Mr. Shagun?
Sir, it comes up, first off, it comes up every year, and in some years, a little bit more than others. This year, it never even made it out of committee onto the floor. I would discount that, and I would tell you that the quickest way to privatization is for the ABC stores to start just reducing in quality, and reducing, and that's problematic. I would also just let the board know that from the day you let me start on the planning, that if you told me today, I would have to tell you that it would be 18 to 20 months before we would be cutting a ribbon. So please understand that, and then the impacts that we have. And I appreciate what you've said, but I just want you to understand that it's not like, okay, Chip, you can go, and when are we going to have it open? It will not happen for 18. We have a whole bunch of other loops to go through with the state, NC DOT, you know, just to get approval, just those two guys, five months. So if you tell me stop right now versus at least letting me go to the ABC Commission and seek approval, they don't, they don't have a time limit, but just to do that and to go to the two state agencies, five months.
Okay. I hear you. Let's make sure I understand, because that's my intent. That's what I want. I don't want any movement forward, and I think that's what my colleague here has to say, 18 to 24 months before you even start spending any more money to move it forward. Yes, sir?
I don't have a problem with waiting for a while. I hate to put a number to it, because, and I guess we could always come back and revote, but if something comes up a year from now, we're stopped, we can't, we can't move forward because we said 18 months. And I don't like a hard number, is my comment, and I'll vote no on the 18 to 24 months, because I think what we can say is, we certainly don't want to move forward the next year, but to go to the state, there's no real cost involved to do those two things he just mentioned, and then when we're ready to go, we at least got those two things behind us. So to tell him to do nothing for the next 24 months, I think is a mistake. That's just my personal opinion.
We have a motion and a second. Any second, any other comments?
Yes, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
One of the reasons that I voted for it, because I realize, I mean, I look at our younger, even as young as 10, 11 years old, getting on alcohol, getting on drugs, this make my heart heavy. I was a young child one time, and I remember, first time I tried, my friends convinced me to try just a little bit, and I tried just a little bit, but that's by having a mother and grandmother who stayed by my side and saw that I did not get involved in going in further, that I stopped early. But I see all our young people being destroyed, starting out with alcohol, then drugs, then stronger drugs, killing up our young people. I could not sit here and vote to add another problem in their way. And I'm really, really serious about getting the young people off of alcohol, I'm serious about getting the young people off of drugs. I'm concerned about jails being full, and I'm concerned about people killing each other up because they're on these drugs and alcohol. And I'm definite concerned, and it hurts my heart, not only when my kids get involved, but when other kids get involved. Even as a young man, I used to go out to prison and just see the guy that was in there. And the guy, and the prison been growing and growing and growing, and it's still growing. And I'm just proud that we have somebody now that is really, really working on trying to stop this drug, this alcohol, killing up people on the highway. I've been in about four or five accidents, and I wasn't drinking nothing, but other people be drinking. And so I'm just committed, that I'm going to do everything I can. And so I, 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 I'm just committed that I'm going to do everything I can to try to stop the flow of anything or make people act like they don't know what they're doing. So that's all I have to say.
Mr. Chip, let me say something quick.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to tell you the reason why I voted no on it, because one thing about it, in James City, you got a liquor store there, ABC store in James City. Eventually, when it put a store in Bridgeston, that store could be closed, and you can't tell me no different, because I took a lot of people from Raleigh, it's going to be closed. So if they're closed, then everybody go to Bridgeston. If there's a storm or a bridge closed down, how can they get to Bridgeston and get some liquor? If their store stayed in Bridgeston, yes, I would go for it. If I was told that store going to be removed. Now, everybody can say what want to say, but that's what I hear from the top. You can do some investigation. Say what else?
Mr. Chairman.
Wait till he's finished.
You got something to say before, Chair?
Go ahead, finish, go ahead, finish up.
Oh, you know, that's one of the reasons why I'm saying that the liquor store, ABC store in Bridgeston is going to hurt the one in, in James City. Some of y'all might say no now, but down the road, it will. That's what I have to say, Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, nobody is closing the James City store as far as, and I haven't heard anybody say that, and I don't believe the liquor.
Sir, the only people that can close, open a store and close a store in Craven County is this board. I, I make a recommendation to you, but Mr. McCabe, when we went through, sir, with the second Havelock store, you know, you, I made a recommendation, this board didn't agree with me, and it did agree that it happened to close down eight months later. But it's not me, sir. I just make a recommendation to you. We would keep that store open. As a businessman and, you know, with Mr. Booker there, we're making money in that store down James City. We wouldn't close, I wouldn't even come to you with a recommendation to close it. I'd come to this board if it was losing money or if it was unsafe for, for our citizens, you know, to go into the store and so forth, and our people. That's the only time I'd come to you, sir, but other than that, and then you make the decision, not me.
But one thing, remember now, before, you mentioned that before, ABC store in Bridgeston will be closed years ago. I never forgot that, out of your mouth, you say that.
But if I may, you know, we're hashing something that happened two years ago on that was caught up. And I hear, I hear you, you know, understand what you're saying, but again, it's this board's authority whether we do it or not do it. Vice Chair, you have something else to say?
Just one thing, as far as the bridge being closed and not getting to it, I don't think anybody is going to be in that of an urgency to get to a liquor store. But on the other hand, then, the people from Bridgeston can't get to James City because the bridge is closed. So what's the difference?
All right, we have a motion and we have a second to give instructions to the chair to not to proceed for eighteen to twenty-four months back to this board or do any action on, in new store. I haven't heard anybody want to change that, so that's the motion, and that's the second. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
No.
Chairman Leiner?
Yes. Sir, do you understand?
I do, sir.
Got you. Thank you for everything.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next on the list, Department of Matters, Soil Conservation, and Emergency Watershed Protection Program. Patrick?
Good evening.
Okay, hold on, Patrick. Let's give people time to leave if they want to leave. Everybody here for the ABC Board?
Yes, sir. All right, last fiscal year, the Board of Commissioners adopted the budget amendment for our Emergency Watershed Protection Program for the Robert Mills site. Since this budget amendment was adopted last fiscal year and the county just received the authorization to pay the contractors, staff would like to request that the Board of Commissioners readapt the budget amendment, and the final approved budget amendment amount is ninety thousand, four hundred, seven dollars and ninety-one cent.
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, any comments? I'm going to call on the manager to talk on this one so the general public and the audience is aware of what this did. First in the state, under budget, on time, if you mind.
Yes, sir.
If you wouldn't mind.
I'm really proud about this, and Patrick and Don and Chad out in planning did a great job for us. This is Emergency Watershed Protection Program. It's a program that after Hurricane Florence was authorized for coastal counties who saw shoreline erosion. If many of you are familiar with the Noose River area from, call it New Bern to Havelock, we saw a lot of properties who lost everything in the back. What this program particularly is created for is houses that are endangered. Endangered could mean the property is sort of on the cliff, and if there's any more erosion, that property is going to degrade to where it's unlivable. Or, Patrick, could be that the septic system's back there, and it's exposed, and there's no public sewer that can be authorized for the house. But we were the first to apply for the funding, we were the first to get the funding, we were the first to complete a project, and we're the first to close out a project in North Carolina, and quite frankly, probably the United States, because this was a new program after Hurricane. I guess it was the one Irma in Puerto Rico. But we're really pleased, however, because the closeout happened after the federal fiscal year closed, we need to go ahead and reauthorize and get everything back once we can move closeout. And Patrick, I wanted you to talk about how many more you think are in the pipeline, because we're working with Raleigh right now, and there's quite a few there with the Corps of Engineers.
Yes, sir. Well, what we've got right now, we're looking at about sixty-nine other parcels, individual properties. And matter of fact, we just got an email today that's pretty encouraging on the approvals for those. So as soon as we get that final approval, we'll be able to move forward with contracting, securing contractors and all that on these other projects, so.
And Mr. Chairman, I left the most important out. We came in under budget on our first project significantly from where we thought with Army Corps of Engineers we'd be. This project, we had a great construction partner and trader who did this first one. Really good project.
Well, I think the biggest point, Patrick, of what the job that you did on selling this and getting it done and being out there.
Thank you, sir.
And I, I think the public needs to be aware, realizing, everybody says it's not your tax dollars. It is your tax dollars, but it's not your county dollars. It's out of federal, federal insurance program that we already pay for at one level or another. If you live along the Noose or the river out there after Florence and seen some of those houses that's lost everything up to the foundation, and what this gentleman has done to shore that back up and go through, and like I said, we're the first ones in the state, and we've got people in the state coming to us now asking how to get it done. So we owe you that a gratitude for doing that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I have, I have a motion?
Yeah.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Leiner?
Yes. How's the Beavers?
We're getting them under control. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next on the agenda, Solid Waste Croaten Convenience Site, Steve Astor and Jean Hodges.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Board of Commissioners. My name is Stephen Astor. I'm the Assistant Director of Solid Waste Department here for Craven County. On September sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, Craven County Board of Commissioners awarded the GHC Construction, the contract to our NOR, to our new Croten Convenience Site located at seven two forty U.S. Highway seventy east in Havelock. The construction is required to replace the current site located at seven 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 five U.S. Highway seventy east in Havelock due to the U.S. Seventy bypass construction. We are asking the board to approve a budget amendment recognizing revenue from the North Carolina Department of Transportation to pay for the activities related to the construction of the Croten Convenience Site in the amount of six hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
You entertain a motion?
Motion.
Motion, second. Mr. Sampson, is your second answer?
Yeah.
Okay, motion. Any discussion? Any comments? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Leiner?
Yes. Jean, you want to add too?
That's it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Okay, coming up on the, next one is appointments pending, Adult Home Care, Home Advisory, Nursing Home Advisory, New Bern Planning, Trillium Health. We should have, that, that one should be done, is that not? The Trillium Health? We got the one last month, huh?
We appointed that last meeting.
Last meeting?
Yes, sir.
That's probably a sudden case, Darren.
Yeah, she made the meeting with me last month. Craven, we're going to hold on that one, that's going, or is that an additional one?
No, sir, it's the same one.
Okay, we're going to pull that one. Okay, and then Senior Letters, Leave Tire Heel Alternative, okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I comment before you move on?
Yes, sir.
The New Bern Planning and Zoning Board, the one vacancy there, applicant must be a part of the New Bern ETJ. That's a fairly important one for their board. Obviously, we have a couple seats on their board because of the ETJ. It's actually county, it's not in the city, but they have zoning rights over it. So at some point, what I may do is have GIS fill up the addresses of everyone who's in the ETJ so you can see who you can pick from, but typically, they like for us to try to make that up pretty quick, and I think it's been here a couple meetings, so.
What area is that in?
ETJ could be anywhere from Bridgeston, they have ETJ there, they have ETJ, I believe, going out toward, Mr. Johnny, where your district ends, I'm trying Pleasant Hills area out that way. It just depends on where they've actually added it in, outside the city.
If you authorize the list, I'll call it.
Yeah, provide another list, yes, please. Okay, going down, current appointments, Craven County Clean Sweep, one vacancy. Don Ossler has submitted application shown in six B, seeking appointment to the Craven County Clean Sweep.
I'll appoint them.
That nomination to appoint him, any other nominations? Hearing none by acclamation. Jury commission, Timothy Mason is seeking reappointment, has been recommended by Terry Sharp, clerk of court.
I'll recommend it.
Okay. Any other recommendations? Hearing none by acclamation and reappointed. Craven County Recreation Advisory Council, two vacancy, Eddie Games, David Ditz, Paul Whittaker, Carrie Gallagher, and Jeffrey O'Neal have submitted the application shown in six B, seeking appointment to the Craven County Advisory Board. There's two. I would like to make a nomination for one of those were mine, and that would be Mr. Whittaker. Need a second, I.
I'll recommend Eddie Games.
Mr. Whittaker and Eddie Games. Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, they're reappointed. Upcoming, oh, okay, we got one here, hold on, I want, everybody got a application for the tax commission? Make sure, we, we write on this, there's a vacancy?
Yes.
He's, he's replacing who?
The past tax commissioner, he passed away a couple months ago.
Who's he replacing now?
I'm not aware of anyone passing away.
Yeah.
I haven't been informed.
Brody, Bobby Brody, he passed away.
I don't have my, the grant.
All right, let's just hold this until the next meeting.
Okay, we'll do the next meeting.
Okay, we'll hold this one until next meeting.
Is this a fire tax commissioner? Is that what this?
Yeah.
Fire tax commissioner? Okay, got it.
Put that in there for next meeting now. Thank you, sir. Okay. I got anything else I left out? I think that's it.
Yep.
Okay. Next on the agenda, petitions of citizens. Mr. Vice Chair.
Let me get my list here. Anthony.
Powers.
Powers.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Anthony Powers. I live in Brys's Creek, and I got a notice that we're going to have a sand mine proposed within a thousand feet above my property. Now, Brys's Creek is surrounded by a whole bunch of residential communities, and there's a farm back there, Ted Haynes's farm. And according to the general legislation, the county commissioners have the authority to go ahead and do some zoning changes. There's no zoning at all in Craven County. And we're not talking about zoning for the whole Craven County, we're talking about small sections that you can go ahead and do zoning for. And it's right there on the paperwork I gave to you on the general statute, Michael Special Allen, you gave it to me. So the reason we're doing this is because there's no zoning in Craven County, and this is going to affect the community of Hunters Ridge, Oakview, River Trace, Deer Run, Lynn Rain, Reedy Creek. There's thousands of people who live in that area, and Brys's Creek Road is a two-lane highway that is not going to be able to service all these trucks that'll be going six days a week from sunup to sundown to support the sand for the Highway Seventy project. This is a residential area. We have a lot of people in there that ride their bikes on the highway. We have young drivers that just getting their license that are going on Brys's Creek Road. We have people that'll walk along Brys's Creek Road, and it's not safe to have all these big trucks running there from sunup to sundown, and the noise pollution, along with the sound pollution, is going to be astronomical, it's going to affect the quality of life for everyone in that community, which is mainly residential. So according to this legislation that's been proved in North Carolina's general statute, the county commissioners are the one that have the authority to go ahead and limit through zoning what can be done in the county. You can look down in the second paragraph of General Statute one fifty-three A dash three forty-two, and it states right in there the authority that you have to go ahead and change this, add zoning, and it doesn't have to be the whole county, it can just be small sections, along with its six hundred and forty acres with ten private tracts of land, which this area is, more than includes that, with all the residents that are back there. So I'm imporing on you to go ahead and take a look at this, contact the state, find out that this is the, this is definitely the way it is, and we need to have something done in Craven County because we cannot have an open pit sand mine right behind a residential neighborhood that's going to affect eight or more communities with thousands of people that live back there. And it's, it's not, it's not that we're trying to take away from Ted Haynes using his properties at farm, which he's been doing for a long time, but this is about the residents that live there and the quality of life for everyone included that live in all these residents. There's so many people that live back there that are opposed to this. We have over four hundred online signatures and over a hundred on hard copy, and we're getting more people involved all the time. So this is something that needs to be looked at carefully and proceeded with at the next meeting. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Linda, I'm going to let you pronounce your second name, because I can't read it.
I can't pronounce it either.
I could be, once I find out if I can read it.
It's Juan Seigler. My name's Linda Juan Seigler.
Juan Seigler? Pull that mic down.
Okay. I live in nineteen eighty-seven Acorn Drive, which is in River Trace. The sand mine will directly impact the quality of life for the people that live in that area. It's going to impact them by the noise, the air pollution, groundwater issues, driving conditions, especially for elderly people, and it's going to be a loss of property value. The homes backing up to the mine can expect to lose twenty to thirty percent of their value. With residential disclosure requirements, property owners beyond the streets of Fair Run in Sanderland can expect a loss in value. National studies on sand pit mining show a residential property value loss of ten percent up to one mile from the mine. This is directly going to impact Craven County through the loss of property tax revenue. With the mining permit modification, Craven County's tax revenues can decrease even more so over a long period of time. The benefit of this mining operations are outweighed by the negative impact on Craven County and its residents. You can do something about the zoning. You know, I, I understand it's Mr. Haynes's private property and what have you, but, you know, if this happens here, it could happen anywhere in the county, and it affects the people's property values. That's all. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ted Haynes?
Yes, sir, my name is Ted Haynes. Uh, I own the property that this mine is tentatively going on. I have heard a lot of talk about damage to roads, environmental damage, dust, noise, especially the number of trucks coming in and out of this mine. I left on Mr. Booker's, uh, desk before the meeting a... A aerial photo of the area that that mine is going into. I have been digging dirt out of that same area for the last 10 or 15 years for use there on the farm. The... The man that is going to be digging the mine, that's actually paying the expenses of surveys, paying the expenses of maintenance and upkeep of the road and is responsible DOT for any damage done to the highways is Ralph Provo. I have known Ralph for years. He came to me as a... An acquaintance and a friend and asked if I had anywhere on the farm that he could dig dirt because due to all the DOT work going on in the area, when he needed some to build a mound system for a septic tank system or something like that for a new home, he had a hard time finding it. He's working on one right now in... Down in Harlow and has to come all the way to Bridston to get the... The topsoil dirt to go over the top of this mound system, sprig it with grass. The agreement that I have with Ralph is it is a five-year agreement. It is allowable to extend it for an additional five years if necessary. It is encompassing a five-acre, uh, area of wood that right now is woodland that does go over to the property boundary of there, but it's not going to mine, it's not going right to the property boundary. Uh, by state law, it's got a 30-foot easement around the outside of it that is... Is supposed to be there. And then it has a very gentle slope going down to any water that may in the... But be in the bottom of it. Uh, he is limited to 25 feet in depth. Ralph has assured me that the only trucks coming in and out of there are trucks that he and his son Josh will be running forgiven projects that they are working on, and this excludes DOT projects. He's wanting it for his own business, which is septic tanks and land clearing and such like that. So if somebody needs a little hole filled up in their lot, he needs dirt to fill it up. If somebody needs a mound to go over septic tank, he gets the mound out of this... Out of this sand pit. As far as the trucks coming in and out of there, the way I'm listening to it, there's gonna be 30, 40, 50 trucks running in and out of this area on the Bryces Creek Road every day. It's not gonna happen, not from me. And if they're concerned about trucks, then they need to be concerned with cement trucks, with lumber trucks, and log trucks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mike Duffy?
Mike Duffy, 121 Morning Dove Trail, New Bern, North Carolina. On behalf of Craven County Clean Sweep, we'd just like to extend a thank you to the Sheriff's Department for the work they've been doing in controlling litter. And we hope that the board will continue to support them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Christopher Ma... Maple?
Thank you, sir. But we're back to River Trace again. Good evening, Board members. Chairman Lyer. My name is Christopher Maple. I live at 1988 Jack Rabbit Lane. And I'm here to talk about the high-density city residential developments and the inevitable clash between adjoining landowners. As you've heard from fellow speakers, River Trace development homeowners have some legitimate... Legitimate concerns regarding sewer road safety, environmental contamination, air quality, and quality of life issues. We can all agree Mr. Provo has the right to secure natural resources and keep his business viable. That's not in question, let's push him to the side. Secondly, we can agree that Mr. Haynes, under county and state laws, has the right of ownership, land use, and the right to monetize his farm as he sees fit. This leads to the real crux of the industrial sand pit issue. When does his right to monetize his land cross the Rubicon? If it adversely impacts the quality of life and well-being of adjoining high-density residential developments? Especially when he allows an industrial-sized sand pit to be located along the adjoining property lines of River Trace, a high-residential development. Let's not fool ourselves, and you and I... You know better than I. Craven County has literally thousands of people moving here, and because of no land-use zoning laws, both resource demands and the development of high-density residential developments has grown unabated. This has directly led to the rise of the activist homeowner, as you'll see as time goes on. We are just beginning to be rest assured that we will follow the community pressure as it grows. Now, Mr. Haynes, like any good businessperson, will underplay his hand when community fear is high. As he tries to reassure both you and us, everything will be okay. He won't tell you that the proposed lake from the groundwater has no feeder streams and will become a cesspool. He won't tell you as... As soon as the state approves Mr. Provo's permit, that Mr. Provo will apply for an expansion of the proposed five acres and an increase in the timeline to 20-plus years. And he will tell you that the property values won't decline and probably go up, except for today. Property values are Craven County's Achilles' heel. The eight-plus high-density residential developments surrounding this industrial mine don't have to go down in value. They just have to not appreciate over a long period of time to impact Craven County's property income tax revenue stream. This issue will eventually become a county-wide issue as landowners and homeowners are on a collision course that needs both inputs from constituents and leadership of Craven County like the Board of Commissioners. Times are changing, and without proactive leadership, lawsuits will eventually start flying. Thank you for your time, and I hope you'll have an opportunity to address this issue.
Thank you, sir.
Phil Bowie? Is a handout permissible?
You can give them to the clerk, she'll pass them out to us, sir.
Okay.
You go ahead and press it, and we'll get them for you.
I'm Phil Bowie, I live at 814 News Drive in James City area. Green Springs, James City area, Mr. Booker's district. Uh, for a long time, we've been... There have been several properties in the area that meet the definition of abandoned and unsafe buildings under the North Carolina General Statutes. This handout shows, uh, some example properties, along with highlighted parts of the statute, pertinent parts of the statutes. In many cases, some of these buildings have been empty for years, even decades, and allowed to fall into severe disrepair beyond any hope of restoration. They're unsafe structurally. They're havens for snakes, fire ants, termite colonies, and black mold. They pose a clear health risk to the community. There are eyesores and embarrassments in several of our neighborhoods, and they depress overall property values. Also, we strongly suspect that some of these sites have for some time been used for drug dealing, and the Craven County Sheriff's Department has a record of some complaints. Part of the definition of abandoned derelict buildings in the statutes is that they tend to attract criminal activity. I do have some good news on this subject. Since I've put this together, there are three abandoned buildings shown here. The first building has been demolished. I wrote letters to, uh, these three owners some time back, and two of them had stepped up, and one of them is, uh, has been demolished. The second one, I've talked with her, and she, uh, has promised to get estimates and have that done in the next couple of months. But it's... The problem persists throughout the county. And, uh, where some publicity about your attention to this issue and local media might prop... Prompt owners to clean up their sites without any further board action, as it's happened here, just a polite request seemed to have done the trick. If the board has seen to be determined, we in Green Springs community believe the problem can be resolved to everyone's benefit, not only in... In our community, but elsewhere in the county. So please help make our county a safer, cleaner, more attractive place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sir. David? Swickline? There he is. Thank you. David?
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is David Swickline. I live at, uh, 1989 Acorn Drive in New Bern, North Carolina. Uh, that is a home within the River Trace area, which, uh, some folks have been talking about tonight. My wife and I purchased the house. It's going on two years in December. Made a lot of improvements, you know? First-time homeowners are really excited about it. Three months ago, we got this letter in the mail that said there's gonna be a hole in the ground, and by law, we have to tell you this. You're within a thousand feet of it. You look at the map, and there's only a few houses within a thousand feet of this. So there are hundreds of residents that have no idea what's going on. None. Social media helps out a little bit. This meeting hopefully will help out quite a bit as well. But I'm coming to you in support of my neighbors and my community as well. Yes, there are issues at hand that need to be addressed. More importantly, though, what is it gonna look like in the future for the residents of Craven County? With infrastructure building, not only highways, byways, septic systems, hospitals, hotels, we're gonna need natural resources. I think it's up to the leadership of the county and of the community to really step forth and say, "This is where you can dig. This is where you can take resources from." You know, if I were to find a gold nugget in my house or under my shed, can I just tear into the ground and have a gold mine in the middle of Craven County? You know, that wouldn't bode so well. So I think it's really up to the county to set forth some guidelines and some infrastructure guidelines in place that will allow the safety of growth in our community and allow for residents to feel safe and understood when it comes time for infrastructure growth in this county. I thank you guys so much for your time and for listening tonight and all the hard work that you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, no others? Okay. I wanna pass this on to... My leader? Manager?
Yes, sir.
Please provide some comments to this, please, of what we've done.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. I was just making a note there. I wanted to just walk the board through because I know you've heard about this mining situation several meetings now. So what I have before you, sorry for the sticky notes, this is the notice that the neighbors were mailed, right? They have sent one to the county manager's office as well, as long with, I believe, our planning department, maybe our tax office. So what this is, is mines are regulated under the Mining Act of 1971, which is a North Carolina law, basically. And then it's prescribed the process through the General Statutes. And what starts it off is General Statute 7450B1, which starts with the notification process if a mine is contemplated. And basically, that's within a thousand feet of where that mine would be. So as Mr., uh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch his name. Mr. Haynes said, he would, uh, you know, whoever's applying for this permit would then notify the neighbors, and then a process would take place. So the process happens at the Department of Environment and Natural Resources. That is a state government department. They are who's charged by the Mining Act with enforcing the General Statutes and the permitting process for a new sand mine or a new mine in general. I spoke with, um, the Director's Office, whose name is Danny Smith. We spoke a couple of weeks ago. At that time, there was no permit in place, no application in place from Mr. Haynes or Mr. Provost to actually have the mine, even though they knew it was coming, they'd had some contact, but it wasn't there first. That application actually triggers a whole process of things that have to happen at the Department of Natural Resources. The first is, they route that application through 10 to 15 different state agencies. This covers anything you can imagine, air quality, fish and wildlife. I mean, and that she went on to name them all. Those 15 agencies then have 30 days to review and comment back to Danny Smith on what their thoughts are on the mine. There's also, um, an opportunity if there is, um, some... Some concern amongst the departments that there could be another 60-day, uh, period of... Of comment. In most cases, however, when there is opposition, they will have a public hearing. And I talked to them about that, and they agreed to have one here in New Bern. Once that application was in, and Mr. Smith would have a staff member come here, he would listen to the concerns of the citizens, and then they would process those concerns. However, they made it very clear to me, the General Statutes are explicit. There's only seven reasons they can deny a mining permit. And I didn't write each of them down. Lot of them are environmental, a variety of different things that come into play. But there's only seven reasons you can deny a permit. Things like noise are not things that they consider in those seven reasons, as you heard tonight. Um, so with that said, um, again, I... The only thing we can offer as a county is the contact we made with the Department of Natural Resources and request that they have a public hearing, here we say agree to do. Now, I'm not... I have not gotten an update on whether that permit has been applied for. I have not been notified of that, but hopefully it'll come. So my second part was to talk about zoning. And I have my resident zoning expert, Don Bumgarner, here. And Don and I, and I spoke with Ari, our county attorney, about this greatly. Zoning logically seems like the silver bullet, right? You zone it, you make it a prohibited use, and everybody moves along, and you can't have it. With the exception of, there's no guarantee that if you zoned it, this wouldn't be an acceptable use, right? Mr. Haynes's property is agriculture, timberland. You know, it's used in a working purpose now. When we were to set up the zones, you can't prohibit everything in every zone. So you'd have to be very careful how you prescribe it. You don't zone for a future use. Mr. Haynes would wanna keep his current use, and of course, you could put a future zoning use there where if his property changed hands, maybe you could apply. So there's no guarantee that even if you zone it, that this would be a prohibited use. Now, when I was speaking with the state, there's actually something unique about not having zoning. If we had zoning and it prescribed it that this was acceptable use, this permit would go through a lot quicker. But because the county actually does not take a stand on our belief on whether it's a good or a bad thing, it actually opens a question a little deeper for the state to dig in. So I think there's... There's definitely pros and cons to zoning. Obviously, Don can share a lot with you. We've... We've been through this, uh, a lot. Uh, I certainly agree with the folks said. As development happens, there's always challenges as you meet agriculture and development. I mean, it's certainly something that happens all across the country. But those are my points. I'd be happy to answer questions. Ari or Don can help you as well.
Questions?
Just a comment that, uh, you know, I think in my heart says I agree with these folks that got out and spoke. And... But legally, we gotta go through the process. And the manager, uh, after we discussed it, made that phone call, and they agreed. Normally, that hearing would be there, but they agreed to come here. And I think that was a... A good concession on their part that you don't have to go to Raleigh because not everybody could go to Raleigh, but most everybody could go to a meeting here. So, uh, that's a start. But, uh, his point was, if it's agriculture, if we zoned tomorrow, uh, Mr. Haynes's farm would be zoned agriculture. And that may be allowed, I guess, based on, uh, on the... The state law on mining.
You'd have a... You'd have a long path to determine it.
Yeah. There... There's good and bad in zoning, you know? The people in the city of New Bern have different safe... Safe, uh, I guess, uh, positive. And I live in the city of New Bern. We... I have positive and negative things based on the zoning in the city. So it's certainly something that this board needs to talk about in the future, and that is, do we need zoning in this county? Do we need zoning in certain parts of the county? That's all something that we're certainly gonna talk about as we go down the road.
Can I ask a question, or is that not possible?
Not possible, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Like a number of members of this board, I've lived in a lot of different areas. So I will be very honest. I am generally pro-zoning. But that is a, but I'm also transplant, okay? And that is a county-wide issue that impacts all sorts of people in very different ways. Do I think it is something that we need to take another look at as this county develops? Yes, I do. But I also think it is something that, since it has to reflect the needs of the entire county, not just one community, not just one commissioner, that can have very long-term consequences, I think it's something that we need to start looking at. Is it time to start thinking about zoning? Not, I'm not convinced that it would solve this particular issue, because my heart goes out to the people who are in this area. But from a thirty-thousand-foot perspective, as we move forward into the future and this county continues to grow, yes, I do think it's time to be looking at it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I happen to have a sand mine in my district, and it's in a development. You do have some control as far as noise abatement. If it's something where noise is running for eight hours or twenty-four hours, we can limit them and have them fix it so that the noise is not interfering with your lives. So there are some things that we can do without zoning. I happen to have, as I said, a sand mine in my district in a nice development. We had a problem there with noise. We were able to solve the noise by putting better equipment in there, and everybody was happy. So that's just another area, it can be done, where you don't have to zone and you can keep controls on it.
Mr. Chair?
Sir?
If I may ask, Jack, were you here when we did the sign ordinance?
Yes. Well, I'm not, but I'm familiar with it, yes, sir.
That was, I think, during my first term on the board. We went through the sign ordinance for James City area some years ago. It was a long, long process that we went through. My question is, you know, this is definitely more extensive if you were to go, you know, for something that we're talking about here. Would we even, if we were to decide to do something as far as zoning for that area, I mean, time-wise, could we even meet the time length and the process that we've got to go through to probably even combat what the state might, decision that they might make?
Well, I mean, obviously, setting up any type of zone is complicated, because you gotta prescribe a process to do it. Public hearings, ordinances, you're creating a law. And then we'd have to make sure we had adequate staff to enforce it. I mean, it would be a new thing. I mean, the thing, I understand, I mean, I've read this general statute a lot in my career, it's something that comes up often. It talks about, contemplates, if any, things over six hundred and forty acres or ten separate property owners, right? But there's still social justice issues that come up in those things. I mean, there's still criteria the county has to look at as you do this. And you gotta be very mindful that you don't treat one person differently than the other that doesn't wanna be treated that way. And that's the most difficult part about spot zoning, is that you never really have a great answer to that question. It all depends on how it sorts itself out in court, if someone challenges it. So, I mean, I think, boy, this would be a lot of work, and I'm just providing a suggestion, but you're not, this isn't necessarily, zoning's not the answer to this one, in my opinion. It's more like your tall structure ordinance. If you wanna regulate the activity, which is sand mining, then you need to have an ordinance that addresses sand mining. That's a law, and you prescribe that county-wide. If there's certain criteria, Don, help me here, I'm going on a limb, there's certain criteria, like a windmill. You have a certain height, you wanna keep it below so you don't jeopardize the base. You have a certain manner in which you want a solar panel, so it doesn't have the glare on the other properties. You create an ordinance just like that, except you put some of the things that I think the folks are asking for in that ordinance. Now, we'd have to be very careful as we read the Mining Act and we read state law, that we don't become in conflict with the state's policies. But I do think it's something we could explore, but getting that in place before this process is done, I mean, that, I can't, I don't know if that'd be possible.
I'm saying the same thing I've already said.
Yeah.
It was a long process that we went through when we did the sign ordinance some years ago. I mean, it just didn't happen in two months, you know. I mean, it took multiple meetings, public hearings, et cetera, et cetera, and then we came, that we were gonna get sued by the sign industry. You know, we were faced with lawsuits in and out of that, which never went through, but we all had that flashing in front of our face, like constantly.
Sure. You may have it on this.
Yeah. And then that's what causes the resistance from members of this board and staff, is when you start hearing about lawsuits, you know, that more thought process comes into it, and so.
Commissioner Jones, to answer your question, the last two ordinances that we've written that'd be similar to this, be the tall structures, the solar energy. I would say anywhere from six to fourteen months, both somewhere in there, from start to finish.
Easily that.
Yeah. I think the tall structures ordinance was about a year and a half.
Yeah. Any other comments, sir?
I think these citizens have brought up a good point, you know, with the expanding US seventy, Don. I mean, you're talking about a lot of field dirt that's gonna go into that roadway. And, you know, where do you get that much field from close proximity by, you know? That is, I mean, it is, it's gonna take a lot, many acres to do that, many acres. So, I mean, this could be whether, I'm not saying that, you know, I understand what gentleman landowner said about what the purpose of this is, and I'm not implying nothing that it's supposed to be any more than that. But somewhere, there will be somewhere on that side of the bridge properly, that there's gonna, somebody, DOT's gonna be looking at a big area of property for. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments? Well, first of all, I wanna thank, go ahead, sir.
Yes, I'd just like to say that I know we had quite a few problems, a lot of big trucks tearing up the roads over there, over in, oh, Highway seventeen. They had total roads up so bad that we couldn't even get in the school buses in and out there. Couldn't get a emergency vehicle in and out there. And I contacted the state. They didn't do anything. The people that, they're like, I couldn't get no support from the state on it. Well, neither county couldn't go up there and do it. And I worked hard trying to get those roads so school bus could even go up there. Emergency vehicle couldn't go up there. And it was a headache trying to get something done about that road. That's all, the people that were living there, what, really, it was, there were about ten people living down that road. But what the public truck would do, they would go up there and tap the road. Some of the citizens up there trying to fix the road so some school bus could get up there. But they would go up there and tie down, tie the road up. I talked to the state about this several times, trying to get them to do something, but I never could get them to move on it. And it is bad when they tap those roads like that, and you got to keep right on fixing the road, cause each company that come in there, they for, I told them, the overall general assembly, some of the people in the general assembly, that they shouldn't have a law that they could fix, that they would have those trucks, the people that own the trucks, that fix those roads when they're going, they tear them up. But they did never, they not ever do anything about it. I don't know what happened, but I've just about worked myself to there, trying to get something done to help get those roads back in the condition that the people had them in in the beginning with. They really, I could not get them to move on it. And I know it's a problem, it's a big problem, and they keep right on running in those highways, very public truck. And then it rained, and then they keep going further and further, tearing the road worse and worse. And the individuals that live up that road can't get out.
Anything else, sir? Thank you, sir. I'd like to thank my colleagues for their comments and everything else. I didn't put my hearing aids in this evening, so I wanna make sure that... What you, yeah, what was stated here, I wanna make sure the audience, because I heard somebody say they're gonna be coming back at the next meeting. This won't be settled at the next meeting, but you're more than welcome to come back. We wanna see every smiling face here, believe me. But it's gonna take some process to do this. I think we've heard you, but we've gotta make sure we do it right. But I wanna, I know you, if you're coming back, you're more than welcome, that's for sure, but we won't have any answer for you on that. All right. Next on the agenda, Mr. Attorney. No report. Yes, sir, that's a big disappointment.
That's really big.
I was waiting for that one. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity. And I'm really excited, because we got a gentleman who, I think, had such a good time at our Citizen Academy last Tuesday. He's already came to his first commissioner meeting, the gentleman here on the end, so we're happy to have it. We had a great first kickoff meeting last Tuesday. We, instead of our normal three hours we'd allocated, we actually stayed four. We were there till nine-thirty, because we got so excited talking about county government. But we have fourteen participants, very engaged group of people. Chairman Liner welcomed them and told them a little bit about what it's like being the chair and a commissioner, and I think they enjoyed that. And they heard from a variety of county partners. So, of course, we're taking this week off because of the commissioner meeting tonight. We'll pick back up next week, and we'll be at the airport for a tour and go see our sheriff out at the sheriff's office. And then we'll finish up here. Again, we're gonna have a mock commissioner meeting, so we're gonna find an issue for them to debate. And, Mr. Chairman, we'll see if they get put on the spot like you did tonight and can't make their mind up, so. But, yeah. So, good news, we had a great C-1A meeting last week. We had our full board. Commissioner Booker represents the commissioners on that. We had a team of the Warehouse Realty Company, NC State University, Duke Energy, a site selector out of Georgia in the Southeast Regional Partnership, come and do a debrief with us over the last year of Craven County economic development. A lot of positivity there. Really excited to hear that Warehouse of Real Estate Investment has a lot of plans for our county. A lot of plans coming forward and coming soon. Duke, again, very helpful in economic development, continues to be someone we can count on to partner with. And then, really listening to what a site selector thought when he visited our county. Commissioner Booker, I thought it fascinating to hear somebody's outside perspective on that. And lastly, we had a bit of excitement today, if you're not aware. Today was the first day of our new recycling program. And this is the once-a-month service started today. We filled in phone calls, still trying to educate how that process will work. But I did speak with a representative from Waste Industries, and they were able to run the route fully today and hopefully be back tomorrow to do it again. So, Mr. Chair, I'll be happy to answer any questions. The board?
Any comments, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Since you brought up recycling.
Sure.
I, I, I won't, I think it's imperative that we maybe relay some information. And I don't think it's got out properly, probably through our media as we ought to. Maybe it's something that you can consider whether it needs to go out on our website. But when we were discussing about the different proposals that Waste Industries submitted to us, whether weekly pickup, biweekly, or monthly, one of the downfalls that we saw as a board, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that if it went to weekly pickup, that they would only pick up one eighteen-gallon container a week.
Correct.
Versus now, a lot of our citizens are putting out two and three, because they have more recyclables to put out. But they said that because of the lack of revenue, if you will, that they were receiving now, that they were only gonna bid it in to pick up one eighteen-gallon container.
Correct.
So we took into our consideration and discussions that, you know, if you take, if they pick up every week, four times eighteen does not equate to what a ninety-six-gallon container pickup is for once a month.
Correct.
So I don't know, you know, I think a lot of citizens, and it's just, they just don't know. There's some that will not ever like the program, and I understand that, that's their right. I'm not happy over it myself. But at the end of the day, you know, if, we still have our convenience sites. But if we had have gone back to the old program, it was gonna cost more, plus they would not have been able to put out as much every week.
Correct. Commissioner Jones, I have just two comments. One is, the cost now, the sixty-dollar cost would have been much higher had we maintained the weekly service.
About four hundred and fifty dollars.
Correct. And you would have received less service that way. You're right, it would have been eighteen-gallon bin, four times a month, which our rough math is seventy-two gallons. So you're actually getting more by going once a month than what we would have gotten there. I think, you know, the luxury of being able to sell the goods for a high price overseas for so long, allow Waste Industries to pick up more than was ever contracted for. We never contracted for them to pick up more than one container. They just chose to do it over time. And as that market tightened and they started seeing their margins lessen, they weren't willing to do that any longer. So no matter what, if it was once a week, twice a week, it was the same small container. We felt like this container, albeit, I mean, it's posing a challenge for some people, and I understand that there's no perfect solution. There were people who still didn't like our old program the day it went out of business, and they never liked it. So we did the best we could. Obviously, cost was a consideration when the board made that decision, and this was the lowest cost with the highest volume. That's what it came down to.
I may add one more thing.
Yes, sir.
Correct me if I'm wrong here, too, but if a citizen desires to have another ninety-six-gallon container, they feel like that the one is not enough. They can contract with Waste Industries or GFA or whatever they call, on their own.
Correct.
But they would pay that additional sixty-dollar fee.
Yes, sir. They contract directly with Waste Industries, and they'll bill them.
But make sure they understand, they pay the sixty dollars upfront, it's not on their tax bill.
Sixty dollars that we pay is for one, that you'd pay to Craven County is for one can. If you want a second can, you're doing business with Waste Industries separately for that.
And I apologize, I haven't read it, if you've got it on the website. Have we put that on?
I believe so. Yep, it is. I'm looking at Amber.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Next on the agenda, Commissioners' report. Commissioner McCabe?
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
You're not gonna talk about Belize?
Okay, let me talk about it, then. I won't say anything about that.
Mr., are you gonna talk?
Oh, yes, I'll talk, I'll say a few words on it. Yeah, my friend, we went on vacation to Belize, spent about six days and a half. And we went to Durham, or ride Durham Airport to catch a flight out of there. But what happened was, the flight was delayed, so we got to Belize, we had to stay, I mean, in Florida, we had to stay at another hotel, because in Belize, there's, in Florida, there's only one flight to go to Belize. It was two. But what happened, that there's not enough people to travel on two airplanes, so it cut into one. So we had to stay in Florida for the whole night. Eventually, we got to the morning, we did go to Belize, and we had a wonderful time. But let me tell everybody in this room and the whole world, we are blessed compared to where the people live over in Belize. They are poor. They live in shacks. They had no bathroom, no air conditioning, no heat. And the food is, is good, you gotta eat something. So I, I'm sitting here now, so I'm living. But all of that was real nice and had a good time. We went zip lining. First time I ever been on zip lining, it was real nice. Went ATV and went snorkeling and all kind of stuff, so it was real nice. I had a good time. Ask me, don't wanna go again? No. Because, you know, it's a poor country, and the roads are bad. The people walking around are so hot with an umbrella over their head, so it's bad. And we complain about the food we hear, we throw away food away, they'd be glad to get it. And we all live as a millionaire in this county compared to how they live over in Belize. So you need to thank God and yourself, how good God is to all of us, 'cause it could have been happening here. Unfortunately, it's over there. So I understand, you know, I just throw my head off to them, I pray for them guys. But, but some people enjoy living that way. You just been talking now, I shouldn't have said nothing.
I know, I shouldn't have said nothing.
But a lot of people enjoy living that way. You can't change a lot of people's lives. But overall, they all live very, very bad country. And the other side, in the Keys, you got the rich people, live in high and the hall. But that's part of life, you gotta hear in United States. But God is good, and people seem to be blessed, and we all seem to be blessed as well. And we had a good time, coming back, had a good time, traveling back, and we got back around about eleven o'clock. But when you go to Belize, you make sure you clean nothing on you, 'cause you got your dogs, you can take all your clothes off, and I can't, I can't take that. But, you know, you gotta do what you gotta do. I was a police officer, that's why I hate, I hate such other people, but now they're such a mean. But anyway, we had a good time. And the most important thing about that, we got there safely, and the good Lord blessed us to get back. When I got back to my house, went into my house, I kissed my wall. Thank God, we made it back. That's all, Mr. Chair, I have, as a present of me.
No, that's it. Mr. Johnny, wait for a minute, sir. Manager forgot something, sir.
Mr. Johnny, I'm so sorry.
Board, I forgot the most important part of what I was supposed to come up here for tonight, and that's to introduce our new convention center director, Tarsha McCoy. I apologize, I had it written down. It looked right past it, Tarsha, I'm so sorry. But Tarsha's been with us a grand total of three, four days now? But she spent nine years with us before, and we're really excited to have her back. But she spent nine years with us before, and we're really excited to have her back. She's worked most recently as the executive director of the TDA here in Craven County. She worked for Greenville Pitt Convention and Visitor Bureau. For that, she worked for the Doubletree and for us. So, we're excited to have her here. She brings 25 years of experience in tourism and hospitality, and I'm gonna ask Tarsha if she'll just say maybe two words for us.
Two things I left out? I'm a native Newbernian.
But if you wanna meet with Tarsha, please give her a call, she's excited to be on with us, and we're gonna get that convention center back up and running soon. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Johnny, sir?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, we had a cleanup over there in Dufford Field, and the Phoenix, Phoenix organization, they were handling it up, and I think they did an outstanding job. They worked, they had three days that we were cleaning up in Dufford Field, and we had all races of people out there helping us, and that was something that I thought was really nice, that we could come together and help one another. And I was, I wasn't able to do like a lot of them were, because I was, I was out there with my wife, and she, she stayed right there just about the whole time, but I, I had to get up and ride around sometime, 'cause I was, was not able to really keep up with the kids who were working out there. We had, we had, we even had this church that was out there helping us, and I thought that was really unique. And young people, old people, middle-aged people, working together to help somebody else, and that's, that's really unusual nowadays, because it looked like most of the people wanted to be fighting each other. And I always, I said, those, and we had Reverend Johnson, and he was the president, and had the lady, I'm trying to think of her name, I know, because I know her, I can't think of her name now, but she, she, she just a fireball. She's a transplant, she come from another place, but she sure worked hard out there. The three-day hornet hump also worked really hard to help get that Dufford Field area cleaned up. Went all the way up to the cemetery, and then all up Second Avenue, and all in Dufford Field. They had the yellow bags, and the city, the city would come up there to pick the bags up, but what I cannot, what I can't understand, they say some of, they asked some of the, the city aldermen for, for food to feed the people, and some of, and some of them, most of them thought it was not feasible to do that. And I was really surprised about that. I know somebody gonna get mad, but I, I don't, I couldn't care less, because when you're doing a good duty to help somebody else, and all, and their tax bills too, everybody up there in Dufford Field, there was a tax bill. A lot of people say, you don't pay no taxes, but if you buy a soda, you paying taxes. So, I just wanna let you know that everybody that lives in Craven County pays taxes. No, no people will say they don't pay taxes. They would love to pay taxes, they have the job, making a lot of money, 'cause I would like to pay more taxes myself, I would make more money. But a lot of people that making a lot of money, they try to scheme to see how they can keep from paying a lot of taxes. So, we just in that, we just need to come closer together. I enjoy being the storm, I enjoy how it did, did my resident, but I'm enjoying the him see the people coming in, working together, people come far away, and C.L. Washington, the volunteer, to help this community get back on its feet. And I was really enthused, and I was enthused how our staff worked and how they worked day and night, and some of them left their own home to help out in the storm situation. I just hope we could keep that, that kind of loving going on, to help one another when we're in trouble. And it looked like Craven County is doing better. They really are doing better, and I'm really proud of Craven County, I'm really proud to be living in Craven County. I'm really proud of the Craven County government, 'cause these people on, on the Craven County government really worked hard, ain't no doubts about it. You know, see, I haven't seen, and I've been up here going on 23 years, I never seen any of our staff sojourn on the job. They always want to go that second mile, and I appreciate it very much. And another thing I want to talk about is the storm damage. The storm damage just about touched everybody in this area one way or another. But I, personally, I stayed, I stayed out there in jail about nine days, couldn't get back to my house. Then I got there, it was so bad, I tried, I tried to fix it up myself, had the fever come in there, I had these shorts on the house, and the shorts on the furniture, and they came in there and looked around, said, well, you ain't got, you don't get nothing there, 'cause you ain't got no $500 damage. And I've been spending money ever since then trying to get it straightened out. And I still have, still fighting them, still haven't received no greater amount of money, by the most that I got about, from one of them shorts, about $4,000. That was about the greatest amount I got. And with that water, stay around, a lot of, so much water around my house, they had boats running around picking up other people who were stranded on the roof. But the Lord has blessed me, and He really taking care of me, even though I had a bad accident, and I'm still getting around, so He just keep right on blessing real good, and I wouldn't serve nobody but Him. And serve the people, because in order for us to serve the Lord, we got to serve one another, we want to, and know. Another thing I have is, I'm concerned about the citizens in our community, especially the kids. We have kids running the streets, eight, nine, 10, 11 years old, jumping on people who go on to work, stealing bicycles. I don't know about, I haven't heard telling them stealing cars yet, but if they keep going like it's going, of course, I can't talk about the sheriff, 'cause he's doing an outstanding job. We just need more people out here working together, 'cause the sheriff can't take care of every crime that it is. But I want to call on the membership to do something. I talked to the county manager about what is happening in our community. And kids get put out of school, they ain't got nowhere else to go, they go on a road down, up and down the street and cause havoc to other people. But we got to think about our kids, and we got to continue to monitor our kids. Now, I got some bad kids too, and some of them had to pay the cost, but I still, I'm still gonna try to help other kids, as well as get mine back on the track. And working together, we can do this. We got a program that we call, we're working on our OPo part, a reentry, and this program is doing an outstanding job in this county. I believe we got one of the best programs is in this state, and obviously in all 48 states, because they are beginning to help the people that's in jail, help the people that's on the way to jail, try to train them in trades that they can get a job without going to jail. So, this is something that I'm really enthused about, and I'm really appreciative of all the people. We got good people working in this program, trying to help people. And 'cause I tell people, we don't have anywhere for people walking the street to go, but to the jail. And a lot of times, kind of have a problem getting in there, 'cause you got to pick them up, and the, and the, and the police department, they act like they don't want to take people at the police station. We did have a lady walk right around here and come to church, and my wife was there, she's saying she had nowhere to go, and so my wife took my car, and her car, and rode the lady all around, and finally took her, took her to the police station, and say, well, so I told them, said, no, we don't take no people here, but from what I can understand, the chief say that they do take people there, well, he'll get proud if, if we don't do something about these kids running the streets. And we, and we need to work on something to keep the kids from getting put out of school. 'Cause once they pull them out, and they ain't got nowhere else to go, the next place most of them will go is to jail. We got to come up with some kind of program to help the citizens in this county, and we can be example for other counties. We complain a lot about, we got so many peoples in jail, we got so many kids in jail or in their homes, we got so many kids that they got adopted because they don't have a home to go to, and all of this costs money. But we gonna have to take up the flag. We as citizens are gonna have to take up the flag and begin to do something to help our kids. And that's one more thing. I know the lady that's coming in as the, our new worker at the convention center, she was here when I, when I first came on the board, and I've been here, so she, she been around the loop, but she came back, and we just glad to have her. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Booker?
Just one quick point, and that is, the manager covered the meeting that I was gonna talk about, but the C-1A meeting. But the only point I was gonna add was, Mr. White, was that we are very fortunate to live in this county, because these four people that came and spoke to us, I think one lady does reside in our county, but the other three are from other parts of the state, they came to speak to us about what our pluses and minuses are. And they couldn't, they, they went on and on about all the positive things that the city of Newbern and Craven County has to offer. And we have some areas where we can improve, obviously, but it was a really encouraging and kind of exciting meeting to listen to, so I just wanted to add that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Two things. I had the opportunity to be with the sheriff this past weekend, and he was sharing with me a little bit about resources that he's been able to secure of several high-rise military vehicles, his anticipation of some Humvees and for some weather events that we might be able to have. I appreciate him securing that, several million dollars' worth of vehicles that will assist our county during major weather events, and so, no cost to our county. So, I commend you for doing that. Last thing I'd just like to say is that Western Craven County lost one of our great leaders last week, John Wetherington III, who is Mayor Wetherington's son. He was alderman in the town of Dover. They found him dead in his home at the age of 53 years of age. And a great loss for Western Craven County. He was very active in the Dover community, Dover Fire Department, and a great champion for the town of Dover. And so, I'd like that to just be recorded in our minutes, spread upon the minutes to recognize his service to the citizens of Craven County. And that's all I have, Ms. Chair.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Mitchell?
Just one thing, sir. This past year has seen a great deal of improvement in the ability of our county animal shelter to meet the needs of animals that have been abandoned, seized in court cases, and of the citizens who need assistance with either animal rescue or animal adoption. And we have another, more evidence that I just received tonight that we are continuing to move forward. I'd like to congratulate the shelter, and I would like to thank Channel 12 for their continuing support of animal adoption programs. Channel 12 will be working with the shelter beginning in October to increase the visibility of animals that need adoption, and also to highlight the services that our new and improved shelter and our new shelter director are providing to the county. So, we still have room to grow, we, there's more progress that needs to be made, but we've also come a long way in just a few months.
Mike, sir?
Yes, I actually have got four boards to report about, but I'm gonna cut them short. But I would like to congratulate the sheriff in that he took $450,000 of heroin off the streets last week, I believe it was, and we commend you for that. The other thing is Highway 17, Board, I'm gonna lump them together. As far as Highway 70, we're on schedule for that to start in January, and that's James City and the five interchanges. Highway 17, we're a little bit behind schedule on that, that's been put back to 2024 now as start date. I'm also on the Dick's Crisis Intervention Center, which we have a 16-bed center for mental and abuse users. And we've started this, we opened this up in August. I've had two meetings. It looks like we're doing very well. We've had an 85% participation from all of the counties, and we're one of the counties involved in that. We had, I believe, the last count, we had 10 people go this past meeting that were at, went either by the sheriff or by their, themselves. But this is a board that I am on, which is the Oversight Committee for this drug center. I think that it's a start, it's a seven-day program, and in the future, hopefully, we'll really be more successful with this. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. My time.
Go ahead.
It's been a busy couple weeks. Last week, myself and the vice chair went to a meeting with the lieutenant governor. I'll just say, it was pleasant, we learned a lot, we may not like it, but we went to the meeting, and I won't say anymore. On Wednesday, myself and Commissioner Booker went and met with Senator Tillis's staff here to discuss funding for both Matthew and Florence. If the public out there is aware, we still have not received any money from Matthew, nor have we received any money from Florence. And it's been over a year for Florence, it's been two and a half years, three years, two and a half years for Matthew. But I will say, the staff has been good with us. I think the staff is also the one that's helping the sheriff get his stuff for grants and everything else, so they are working with us and everything else, it was a productive meeting. On Thursday, took the vice chair, uh...
You did, didn't you?
I did, didn't, yeah. Vice chair and I went and met with Congressman Murphy at the city of Newbern and discussed the same basic issues, try to get help and his support, both on funding for Matthew and Florence, but also pushed off for agricultural up in the western end of the state. This gentleman right here is, made a reputation for himself with the congressman and throughout the state for his farming ability and knowledge on that. He will be the first one to tell you that he's so far behind the eight ball, it's gonna be hard catching up and everything else. But he is listening, he is learning, and I think his staff is willing to work with us and everything else, and that's all we can ask for. We have a busy schedule coming up. I thought we may be done with workshops, but I think I will be getting with you sometime in November for another workshop. I think we need to bring this board up to speed and everything on Highway 70, on the James City, that is changing. Myself and the manager had a meeting Tuesday, Thursday, I don't know. One day last week, we had a meeting with DOT on the start of that and moving that James City project of what it's changing, but we're gonna give them enough time to get it out publicly of what they're doing and how they're going, but we'll get the board involved so we, we know what's going on. We all, only thing we know for sure, acquisition... We all, only thing we know for sure, acquisition will start sometime in January.
January.
In January, for the James City project, the moving that forward. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go into closed session. The board will be requested to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A, three, four, and six, to discuss personnel matters, economic development matters, and client attorney privileges. Ladies and gentlemen, there is a possibility we will come out with some type of action. It's not the action that you all came for, but we may have action when we come out. But in the meantime, we're going to, if I get a motion for that, we'll take a ten-minute recess.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Ten-minute recess, nine o'clock, meet back.